We will move on to the next item, which is the capital bond sale update. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. We're so grateful to our community for their support in November of 2019 for our 2019 capital bond. It is historic and we appreciate all of the support that we received from our community. I just wanted to share that I think trustees, we had talked about it a few board meetings ago, but there were some times following the initial hit of the pandemic where Mr. Dimitro was concerned about whether this initial bond sale would even be able to go because of the interest rates and the tremendous fluctuation. So I'm just the warm-up act, but I just want to share trustees my immense gratitude in our finance committee and our bond committee and our treasurer trustee Lazarus have worked alongside. And Mr. Dimitro has been able to do this very successfully. And I think it is just a marvelous achievement. I do want to note our next steps because when it comes to a 30-year bond and kind of laying a strong foundation for that bond, we just want to be very clear and transparent. And we appreciate Mr. Lazana and the professional work that's been going on with our facilities, condition index. Trustees, you remember those are the 30 encyclopedias of the condition of our buildings. They've been busy since November collating and putting together a preliminary phase one plan. We already know that our focus will be on keeping the promises, the commitments of our campaign. And you remember trustees, those year one through six promises that we made? And they were around environmental sustainability. They were around making sure that long-delayed repairs are completed. They were around the very hot classrooms across our district that need climate control. They need air conditioning. They were around LED lighting. So I just want to share trustees, as you all are aware of, because we've talked about it in our individual meetings. We are in the midst of refining a phase one plan that will come to the board and will go to the community for communication and engagement and feedback. We are also getting ready to publish the application process for our bond advisory group and our work groups. And we will have a work group on each of the areas of the bond, environmental sustainability, teaching and learning, and our safety and health and infrastructure. So trustees, I know that you're aware of these next steps, but we just always want to position ourselves in the work and how that's going. Our goal is to get an advisory group seated by late summer, have the applications up during the summer, and then have that group begin their work in the fall. So I just appreciate the work of the trustees and we're very excited now trustee, Mr. Dimitro, to hear the story of the sale. Because none of this other work can come to fruition until we get the bond sold. So we're ready to hear about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. And I have approximately seven or eight slides in the sale results. It's towards the end. So due to the pandemic, there were different measures that were put in place, like quarantines, travel bans, and closure of public places. There were also issues with some on the supply side. So there were factory closures, cutbacks in supply chain disruption. And also on the demand side, people lost confidence. We have quite a bit of unemployment right now. So there was balance on tourism travel and also there were big implications for education and entertainment services. So, and this is a little outdated. And I know last week it was up to probably 36 million, the jobless claims. This is as of April 24th. So you can see that very, very quickly that the unemployment has, it's very, very high. What do economists expect that was going to happen? There's not really agreement. But the blue is a range, basically, and then the yellow one is the average. So this second quarter, we expect that some economies go as high as 45%, but at the average is approximately that they will be about a 34% downturn in the US economy. But then on the third quarter, some people expect no rebound and some people expect up to 40%, but the average is about 18%. And then there's more recovery as time goes on. That is what is expected to happen. Some of the measures that the, you know, the Federal Reserve has taken is to, which has helped us, is to reduce the interest rates by one and a half. So now it's almost, so these rate cuts, you know, banks can borrow money for, I don't know, quarter of a percent or less, which is great. So, so some, also the Federal Reserve has pretty much put about $700 billion into a variety of markets. And besides the cut rates, these are all the measures that they have taken so far. But a lot of the markets that we are, you know, with treasuries and federal agencies and so forth, there was quite a bit of support. The only market that I know that wasn't supported, it was like the stock market. Also, this shows, this shows the different funds that were, basically, that Congress passed, the two acts, CARES Act and the Paycheck Protection and Healthcare Enhancement Act. And then you can see where all the money was distributed or the intended purpose. Doesn't mean that all the money was spent yet. So these are all pretty much the measures. And this is the kind of the environment that we were working with. So this shows our schedule. And on May 21st, we actually did a bond sale. So now we're drafting all the documents for closing, which tentative the bond closing will be on June 9th. And that's when we will receive the money. But before we go there, we've made a decision that we were going to go for the whole $140 million. And we also decided that we're going to use a competitive sale. So this shows what we were expecting to happen. This is prior to us going out to sale. And then you can see our par was approximately 138 million, 137.9. And we were expected to get a premium of approximately $3 million. And then we would have underwriting costs and then bond issuance costs. And we would end up with $139.6 million. This is our estimates before we went out to closing. What actually happened, we, by the way, we were off quite a bit. We, the part of the bonds was 140 million. And then we were given a premium of 11.78 hundred, almost $12 million, which is unheard of. So our underwriters' discount was much lower, almost less than half than we were estimating. And our issuance cost was almost right on. So the only thing we were right about was the issuance cost. Now, the, what is the significance? And we end up with 151 million instead of, we're ending up with approximately $11 million more than what we thought. So what is the significance of the premium? So, so the premium, I will explain it in a way. When sometimes people go to buy a house and then the asking price, let's say, is half a million dollars, but they offer, they know there's other buyers and so forth. So they offer 600,000 because they really want that house. So it is kind of the same thing with our bonds. With houses, it's location, location, location. And with bonds, it's credit rating, credit rating, credit rating. So we have a very good credit rating. And, but we didn't expect it to be so good this time around. But, so the 11.8 million dollar premium, we do not have to pay back. It is like, it's money that we're getting and we don't have to pay it back and we don't have to pay interest on it. So the, also another benefit is that when we pay the underwriters' fees, the commission, basically, it's only under $140 million. There's no commissions on the premium. So the, when you see the interest rate on the bonds, it will show 3%. But because of the premium that we're receiving, the, the actual true interest rate is actually 2.03143, which I know a school district that sold their bonds the week before and their interest, their true interest rate was 2.7%. And we were expecting to be about 2.5 because they're 1A, their rating and we're 2A, you know, our rating. So we have better rating than them. But we did a lot better than that. So the, because of that, the interest savings to our taxpayers is $12.8 million, which is amazing. And the, the premium that we receive, it does count towards the $1 billion. What that means is that we will not, we will not get, for example, if the next issue, so we don't get any premium, we will not be able to get $1 billion and $11.8 million. The $11.8 million counts towards that $1 billion that the voters approved. So we might have bonds, let's say, for 988.2 million dollars. So, and then my last slide basically shows where our issuance costs are and what they are. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or... It was just an amazing, everybody from the financial advisor or legal counsel, everybody was flabbergasted how good we did.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Dimitro. Trustee Nelson?
I have a few easy questions. First of all, I'll say I agree this is an amazingly good sale. And you and your team have done fantastic work on it. Could you tell us again who benefits from this, this very good sale?
So the taxpayers of a school district, every taxpayer which is in a school district's boundaries are the beneficiaries, the financial beneficiaries of this transaction. Because they will save approximately $12.8 million in payments. So what's going to happen? When, I think when we did our estimates, we were expecting that 4.1 million to start coming down around 2046. What this demonstrates is that the 4.1 million is probably going to start coming down earlier than 2046. It also demonstrates the strength of our tax base, our credit rating, and the confidence that financial institutions have placed on the Ann Arbor, you know, Ann Arbor Public Schools taxpayer to pay back these bonds, basically. There's a lot of confidence and trust that, you know, the institutions that bid that they know they're going to get repaid and there's hardly any risk.
Did you and your team work hard on this over the recent weeks and months? There was this couple days' work?
No, not this. I think the day after we passed it, even before the bond issue passed, there was a lot of work on, you know, the CS were going to have, you know, a lot of estimates. There was a lot of work to provide numbers to the board to, for us to understand what's happening and so forth. So after it passed, then there was a lot of work between the legal counsel and the financial advisors, as from, you know, from the school district to, to get the documentation right. There's packets that we have to publish. But also we have to align the projects and align how the money is going to flow out. You know, we have a lot of work as far as where the money gets invested. And then when it comes out to make payments, so there are projections. There's all kinds of projections and a lot of work. We're working with Emil and the architects and engineers and so forth to line everything up. Because there are also restrictions as far as you have to spend the money within, 85% of the funds within three years. So there's those restrictions. There's also restrictions on, you can't make too much an investment income because then you get penalized. So there's all these rules that we have to play and to make sure that we get everything right.
Did any employee of the Ann Arbor Public Schools get paid more because of this successful work?
No, none of the money is allowed to be spent on any employees of the Ann Arbor Public Schools.
And I would just conclude that this is one more vivid example of the importance of really good, competent people dedicated to the mission. That this team, excuse me, this team literally saved millions of dollars for the taxpayers of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. They did not get a dime of it themselves. In fact, they worked hard and long hours of knowing they wouldn't get a dime. But it's those kinds of people that make a very important contribution to the quality of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. So I, I share Dr. Swift's feeling that we're going to miss you. But what I, what I take great sort of comfort in is that I know Ms. Minnick is the same kind of person. So that, but I just, the point of all that was to emphasize to the public that the quality of our administrative staff is enormously important to the quality of the district. And I just appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. Trustee Nelson, that was, that was great. I really liked the way you, you put those together. I do want to say thank you, you know, of course, to this team for this just outstanding outcome. But also to the taxpayers and just to say, you know, we never take this for granted. We never assume that we are entitled to anything that the taxpayers give us in order to be stewards of the schools. We are always grateful and I hope that folks see the effort that goes into maximizing what we're entrusted with, not just simply taking it and taking the easy way, but really working to just, what's the cliche, blood from a stone, whatever it is, that, how much work goes into really maximizing it and maximizing the stewardship. So, thank you. I have two questions. One, trustee Nelson started to touch on when he said, what does it mean for the taxpayers? And so, you know, when we, when we talk about putting a bond question on a ballot, we talk about it in terms of what it means for like the average, you know, average cost of a home or what it means in dollar amounts. And I understand that at first it won't feel very different, that we'll stay at that 4.1 for a while, but then we drop off sooner. I guess what I learned from the answer originally. But is there any way, and maybe it's too far in the future, maybe there's too many unknowns in terms of inflation and values, but is there any way to talk about what this reduction means to an average homeowner?
It's kind of too early to tell right now.
Okay.
We assumed, when we did our estimates, we try to be very conservative because we don't want to promise something that we don't want to deliver. So we assumed that the increase, there are several assumptions that we make when we make these calculations. So one of the assumptions that we made is that the tax base will grow on the average. This year, for next year, we were, we are estimating to be at 4%. And we know now that the tax base will grow, it will grow. Next year's tax base by 5.27%. So already, in the first year, which the first year is usually the closer that you get, we were more conservative by 1.7% of the tax base. And only $10 billion tax base is like, you know, 170 million. So it does make a difference. In the years after, until 2050, 2051, where all the bonds will expire, we made the assumption that it was going to grow about 25%. Which the tax base in the last, let's say, five, six years, it's been growing double that rate. And I know it will not, you know, keep going that, like that forever. But there's a lot of construction that is happening in our city and the townships that our school district is in. There is vicious growth that is, that is happening and that will only help. And I think the combination of the tax base growing and the combination, if we keep a really good credit rating like we have right now, then that 4.1, it could be coming down starting maybe 2040 instead of 2046 or earlier. And I know from experience, when 2015, we sold $33 million to buy ballaces, musical instruments and so forth. And we kept it at 2.45. We asked people, we want to keep it at 2.45 for 10 years. I can tell you in 20, if we didn't pass this bond issue in 2020, this July, it would have gone down to 2.11. So in five years, we said it was going to take 10 years. So it was actually cut in half when the drop off was going to happen. And that's, that's on the strength of our tax base. So it's kind of hard to kind of estimate 20 years into the, into the future. But all the signs right now are very, very positive. And I will say this, around that time, let's just say if it's 2040, and that, and it starts coming down, that board at that time might want to decide to, we want to renew and keep it at 4.1 so that they can decide, they might be able to raise more money if they need, if they need to, to pay for additional improvements. Because 20 years from now, all these improvements, some of the schools that we're doing now or next year or so forth, they might need additional improvements 20 years from now. The ones that are going to be fixed in 2035 probably are going to be okay. So, but the future boards will have to make those decisions. And also at that time, if the sinking fund keeps getting renewed around 2040, it should be around $40 million a year. So there's this plan that the board approved and we were able to execute. I think it will, not only will bring the school district to a different level, but also it will make, we made sure that it will keep it there as well. So there's a lot of great things that is happening with the infrastructure. So I'm looking forward to coming back and looking at all the improvements and seeing that the infrastructure matches our academic and our reputation, which now it's, but we're on our way. That's what I would say.
Excellent. I know there's a lot of details that go into it, but could you just remind us of the general categories that are considered when a district is getting a credit rating? What did they consider when they, when they, you know, looked at it favorably?
So, so part of the process, we actually, there's, there's not that many rating agencies. There's Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch. So we were rated by Moody's. So we had, usually it's about a two-hour, I get reeled for about two hours. And we provided them a lot of information. I get reeled for about two hours, uh, and we provided them a lot of information. Uh, they're obviously, um, I want to understand what is happening operationally in the school district. They're, uh, they look at the fund balance that we have and and what's happening with the fund balance. They, um, look at a variety of information. For example, the tax base is a big, huge one. Uh, they look at the employers, who are the employers in our boundaries. They, um, they look at the average income, uh, of, you know, the household. They they look a lot of different financial in- information. They look at them, um, they ask a lot of questions, especially how the school district operates, what we think is going to happen in the future, um, and, um, what kind of processes we have in place. They look at our past history, uh, if, uh, so, um, they, you know, um, sometimes we refinance bonds and so forth. So all those things just give them confidence that when we find those opportunities, we'll we'll do what's best. Um, so there's a lot of different, uh, information that they look, and we we try to be as honest as possible and and also point out the positive things that we have. Uh, for example, enrollment was one of the, one of the indicators that they look, is the school district growing, is it? Some of the, they look at the assets we have, the liabilities always. In Michigan, the retirement system is, uh, is is a downer on our credit uh, because it has a unfunded liability in in thirty billion or if not more. So that is one of the, uh, that, uh, that it's it's very hard for a school district to get a triple, AAA rating because of of the retirement system. We, um, so it it's a lot of financial information and and they're very tough, they're very tough to. So.
But but what I generally hear is that it's it's the the composition of the community as a whole, from from tax base to employer stability to kids who show up on day one to district leadership to strength of the team. And so it it truly is this reflection of our community and and the strength that we have as a community to to implement, you know, responsible use of the bond. So so again, thank you to taxpayers in the community. And and I just have one last question. Um, I'm not familiar with your entire body of work, but would you call this your magnum opus?
Uh, um, I I I don't look at things that way. The, um, I I'm usually, uh, mission driven, and I I want to go to a place and make a difference. And and, um, I I I try to choose places that are, uh, different places I work that, my first school district was Flint, uh, and which was, uh, with very, very difficult, financial and, um, financial times in Flint, then, um, but I worked there seven years, and and almost every year we had to cut twenty million dollars from our budget. And and it was different kind of school district. Uh, Muskegon ISD was a completely different system. When you work at an ISD, you're a service. So you're providing services to to your constituent school districts. And at some point, I, uh, Muskegon Heights, when I would say blew up, so I I wanted to go and and help and then bring it back to stability and and, and then working, working here, they were, uh, my first time here, there was some really, really difficult decisions that we had to make to kind of, uh, I would say rescue the school district financially and and, um, so we made some very, very hard decisions, or like privatizing, uh, and also sometimes school districts don't like to, um, add all other school districts, but we we have to take battles with the ISD to get more funding for our school district. So we did some difficult things. And in Detroit, again, there were, um, five hundred some million dollars in the in in deficit. So, um, their only way out is really to get some kind of assistance from the state and were able to convince the state to invest in Detroit Public Schools and and, um, and now they're thriving financially. Um, and here, uh, when I was in Detroit, Dr. Swift would call me to come back, to come back and because before I left, I wanted, I was trying to convince her to go out for a bond issue for about five hundred million dollars to fix the school district. And she said, we'll come back so we can pass that bond issue, come back so we can pass that bond issue. So after, um, did all the hard stuff in Detroit, I, um, I wanted to come back here and then finish with a very positive thing to, um, to, um, to pass the bond issue and and, um, I I really appreciate all the help, all the support. And I think something that, uh, Glenn mentioned earlier about Dr. Swift, Dr. Swift's team, and she has a knack of selecting, um, the best people and 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 then bringing them close to her and and, um, and then supporting them. So I really appreciate her leadership. She knows that we don't always agree and say things to each other, but then we just hug and 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 we get along. So I really appreciate all the all the time we spent together.
That's really wonderful. I just want to say, on behalf of literally generations of children, from Flint to Muskegon Heights to Detroit to to the future generations in Ann Arbor, thank you so much. I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working here.
Absolutely. The, I'm I'm glad we have that on tape because I think we should probably save that for you. And that, I mean, that that is just a very good synopsis of an incredible career. So, um, thank you so much. Um, trustee Lazarus.
Thank you, President Johnson. On that note, uh, Mr. Demetio, I love if you are ever going to be wrong in your calculations. This was the best need to be wrong. Thank you very much. I know it was hard work. I know you put your heart and soul into this whole thing. And I think all all of the board members did, and the community did also. So we thank you for that. I also want to thank, um, PFM and Miller Cantfield. I mean, we couldn't do this without them, and we really, I know the other trustee, trustee Kelly and trustee, uh, Nelson touched on it, but, um, it really is a testament to our community strength and the support of our public schools to make sure that they stay strong for generations to come, to en- enable us to actually move forward, to make sure that our schools, our public schools stay strong. And, um, I just want to make sure, we can get into more details, and I know the night is long, but um, I do have some questions about how we actually will spend this money. And you mentioned something that it kind of went past me, but then it caught me a little bit, is that, you know, we'll, we will on June ninth get a check for one hundred and fifty, one million dollars. And but it's money that we won't be able to just run out and spend, and we need to be good fiduciary um, agents of that money. And I know we could put it in, not the stock market, but we could put it someplace that we could gain a little extra to help the taxpayers, um, down the road, you know, the burden. Um, but you said there's a limit to what we can do, or else we get penalized for that. So that, I, can you just expound upon that a little bit?
Yes. So, um, the 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 bonds, uh, one of the attractiveness of school district bonds is that they're tax exempt. So the financial institution that, uh, when we make a payment, so in in the interest, we pay back the principal and the and interest. So when we pay the interest, that interest, it is not taxable. So, so, um, so the IRS, um, doesn't like it very much. So when we earn, let's say, uh, our our bonds will have a three percent interest rate. So if we invest the money and we make four percent, so we're making more than what we're paying, then is, there is a thing called arbitrage. So when there's arbitrage, then there are, um, a variety of calculations that are made, and then we have to pay the money back. And depending how how much it is, there's also penalties. And and it's and it's, um, and it's a situation we don't want to get into. And because they're tax exempt and and the the IRS doesn't want us to take this money and don't spend it, that's why they have the three year. And then also, don't invest it to make too much money because then then you have the arbitrage issue, uh, which you're going to have to get own attorneys and tax, tax lawyers and tax accountants to kind of, and financial advisors to, um, kind of battle that. So, and there are rules and and we always play within within the rules. We we don't try to do anything that will get the school district in trouble.
Okay. So will we, when we get the money, will we, on June ninth, will we place that in a separate capital fund account, so it doesn't mingle with our general fund monies at all?
Yes, absolutely. So we, um, we have already opened an account in in MyLAF, we, uh, which is a Michigan liquid asset fund, and they they manage basically school districts from all over the state. They have over four hundred school districts that invest in the fund. They have over three to four billion dollars, uh, that their school districts deposit their their cash there. Um, and we, our bank is Chase, so we have MyLAF where we deposit our funds. And then when we need it, our operating bank is Chase. We bring in, uh, money from, from a fund. And with with bond money, we can actually, um, I'm discussing it with Jill. We haven't to, um, to kind of have a bond management account where you put the the funds there and you know, okay, the first year, we're going to spend twenty million dollars and because of the projects that we have for the summer. So then you can invest, the longer term, you invest the money, the usually the higher the interest or you're earning. So if we're not going to spend, you know, the, let's say, out of the hundred and fifty, we're only going to spend twenty in this summer, and then it was going to be next summer where we're going to spend, you know, another, uh, amount of money. And, um, you can invest, let's say, the hundred and thirty million in a longer term, so you can have more interest in it. So we are in the process of discussing all that with Jill, and and we'll we'll make sure that the school district sends, uh, as high a yield as possible without getting in trouble.
Very good. Again, thank you. Thank you to your team. Thank you to the community. I appreciate it. And I'm not going to get all soppy. Dr. Swift already did that for us. But, um, we look forward to working with Jill and, um, and to the next couple of finance meetings. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Marius, you have to give a warning, so we all know when when that's about to happen. Um.
It was in me was trustee Kelly. She asked the question.
You you ta, that was a tag team effort. Um, but trustee Kelly will be around in twenty forty with the bond. So, you know, that'll be payback, right? Um, I I actually had a couple of questions, but in the interest of time, I I just make a quick statement. My my biggest, my biggest question about this was, to what extent was that some of this timing and what extent was it, you know, actual act, actions that we took? And and I hope that, um, seeing that you're, uh, that you are, um, leaving us, uh, I I I hope that those, uh, those practices, those best, those best practices were captured. Um, you you mentioned a few things, and I I I wrote down, um, such as the, um, you know, just just having a preserving our credit rating for one, and then, um, and then, you know, having a having a strong tax base, of course, but if there are any other things that were, that are within our control, I I'm hoping, um, that we've captured that. And then finally, my, the one question I did want to ask, just because the geek in me wanted to ask, um, when you talked about arbitrage, is that, is that, is a, is that only something that can be committed by a tax exempt, um, entity that that's investing? Or is that?
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what, that's what I, that's what I I gather, but just wanted to make, make sure.
Because of taxes, because there are no taxes being paid. If if yeah, if it's not tax exempt and and taxes are paid on the interest, then the IRS is fine.
Right. Makes sense. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.